Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Welcome to the January 11th, 2021 meeting of the Wilmington Board of Select. As soon as to the Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner: WCTV, Channel 9, Comcast, Xfinity, Channel 37, Verizon, Fios, and livestream at wctv.org. This meeting of the Wilmington Board of Select will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656, and intermediate ID 830-3668-5937, then press pound and press pound again with the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments, if they wish to do so, during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment by following the steps previously noted, then press star nine on their telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. All callers using this feature will be placed in queue in the order they enter the prompt. In the event of that, despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. I'll remind folks that all votes will be roll call in alphabetical order. I did want to thank John O'Neill of our Town IT Department and our friends at WCTV, who will be broadcasting this live and recording it for future viewing. And at this point, I actually want to pause and offer our condolences to the family, the friends, and the colleagues and students of Henry Norman, who was a teacher at the high school who tragically passed away on December 15th, 2020. Additionally, I wanted to offer our condolences to the family, friends, former coworkers and former colleagues of Bob Palmer, who is a longtime superintendent of the Department of Public Works, he's a longtime member of the Finance Committee, and he's also a former member of this board, an absolute... He left quite the impression of his county. Mr. Hall, I ask that you reflect a little bit on Mr. Pollan, because you've looked very closely with him over decades.
Yes, I also want to offer my deepest condolences to his wife Jane, his sons Patrick and John, and all of the extended family, his daughter as well for their loss. When I came to Wilmington in 1987, it quickly became apparent to me that Bob was the real deal in terms of being just totally invested in Wilmington, and, you know, I really considered him a mentor over the years. There were just a number of kernels of wisdom, so to speak, that I got from him, just based upon his years of service at that point. You know, I just have a tremendous amount of respect for Bob. He could be assertive and tough when he needed to be, but he was also incredibly compassionate. And I guess one of the things that stood out to me, stands out to me, was just how incredibly invested he was in Wilmington. Wilmington was his town, and the work that he did was his vocation and his avocation. And one of the things that particularly remains with me was the pride that he took in creating the W that you see in front of the parking lot there at the Swain, former Swain School site. That was his idea, and he took great pride in having it constructed and maintaining it. And, you know, he was a great guy.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I'd ask that my members join me in a moment of silence, both for Mrs. Norman and Bob Palmer. We'll start with roll call. Selectman Bendel.
Present.
Selectman Cairo.
Here.
Selectman DePalma.
Here.
Selectman Omahaoni.
Here.
And IMES as well. All members present. The Board is reconvening from executive session for the purpose of discussion, collective bargaining, and strategy with respect to the International Association of Firefighters, Local 1370. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 21A3, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town as so determined by the chairman. And further, to consider the executive session minutes from October 26th, 2020, November 9th, 2020, November 23rd, 2020, and December 14th, 2020, in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30, Section 22. I'd ask that the members rise if they are so able and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have transmitting of the Treasury warrants, numbers 25, 25A, 26, 26A, 27, 27A, 28, and 28A. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bendel, seconded by Mr. DePalma. Discussion. See none. Mr. Bendel.
Aye.
Mr. Cairo.
Yes.
Mr. DePalma.
Yes.
Ms. Omahaoni.
Yes.
And IMES as well. Pass as you may. And on to our first appointment. Our apologies both to Shelley Newhouse, our Health Director, and William Kavanaugh, our Fire Chief, for providing an update on COVID-19. Good evening, and again, my apologies to both of you for the start time.
Thanks, Mr. Hall.
Well, why don't you frame it the way you want to frame it?
Um, we are at our highest rate of positives since this began. Cases are coming in, just so many. We're over 300. We have an extremely high positivity rate. It's just, it's a chore to keep up with them, but we're doing okay. We have good news. Our first responders are getting vaccinated this Thursday, so that's something nice that I'm looking forward to. It's weird saying I'm looking forward to it, but I feel like it's a step in the right direction. And if you, John, if you could bring up that slide, and I'll explain to you where we're going with the vaccinations, okay? So, right now, we're in Phase 1, and if you look down at the bullets, that's, you go in line of who's going to get vaccinated. So, already clinical and non-clinical healthcare workers have already gotten their vaccines. Then you move on to the long-term care facilities, rest homes, and assisted livings. They have already got their vaccines. So, and they were all done, you know, in-house privately by themselves. So, next up is the first responders, which Wilmington is doing as a private clinic. So, those will begin this Thursday. So, you've probably seen on the news that our first responders are getting done throughout Massachusetts. So, some are getting done at mass vaccination sites, and some are getting done privately. So, we've scheduled ours for Thursday. We have a good turnout. I'm happy with it. They'll receive their first dose on Thursday, and their second dose will be February 11th. So, after the first responders, and the COVID-facing volunteers will get the congregate care settings, which would be like our group homes, and we don't have any shelters in Wilmington or correctional facilities. So, we would probably lump those, the congregate care settings, in with the next bullet, which would be the home-based healthcare workers and the healthcare workers doing non-COVID-facing care, because these clinics are going to be for Wilmington residents only. So, if you work for a home-based healthcare company and you live in Wilmington, you'll be able to come to Wilmington and get a vaccination. They are setting up mass vaccination sites across the state, so if for some reason you couldn't make the one in Wilmington, you can always go to one of the mass vaccination sites. There's going to be one at the Topsfield Fair, is probably the closest one to Wilmington, and Gillette Stadium is going to be another one. UMass, Amherst will be one. You know, they may have, they may stand up some more, so we just haven't heard yet. I think the vaccine, it's going to be a slow rollout. I wish it was faster, because I feel like that I'm ready to start vaccinating, and I'm just waiting for a vaccine. So, hopefully, we'll get it sooner than later, and we can move up these timelines. Wilmington had the option of becoming part of a collaborative with some other towns to do, to do vaccines, but I feel like we can handle doing our own residents, so I thought it would be easier that way to have vaccination clinics just for Wilmington. CVS is going to be offering vaccines, I don't know when. Leahy Clinic's going to be offering vaccines, I don't know when. So, you know, a lot of people call me every day, "When can I get vaccinated?" And, you know, I just, I have to tell them I don't know. It's coming, and as soon as we get it, it'll be broadcasted out there, which group can come and get vaccinated. So, I, like I said before, I hope it's sooner than later, but, you know, time will tell. And I really need people to not be afraid to get vaccinated. There is science behind it. We need to do this so that we can get what's called like herd immunity, hopefully, and really put an end to this pandemic. I just, I can't wait for it to be over. It's a lot. It's really, you know, it's, it's a lot. We're at the, I mean, I've been doing this for almost a whole year, and it's just unbelievable how much work it's, it's taking. But we'll get there. I was telling Jeff the other day, I feel like I can see the light at the end of the tunnel. I'm not really sure where it is, but I can see it, like a little bit, I can see it. So, it's coming.
Certainly, we appreciate all the work that you and Shelley Newhouse and the Health Department are doing. I know you had put out a call for volunteer nurses a few days ago. How has that gone?
It's been great. It's been overwhelming. I really appreciate it. People are like, "We're going to send out sign-up sheets," and I already had people ask me, "I haven't got a sign-up sheet yet." Well, don't worry, it's coming. I don't have anything for them to sign up for yet, so that's, you know, and we're talking months, so I need people to keep volunteering, because, you know, this is going to go on for months, so it's not like you're going to get two or three days of volunteering. It's going to be a long haul, every day, a couple of days a week for the foreseeable future.
Well, it's very good that we have an army of volunteer nurses in town to really kind of help get us to that light at the end of the time, Shelley Newhouse. And again, my compliments to you and your staff, because I can only imagine the hours that you folks have been working, trying to protect us. And I wanted to ask Chief Kavanaugh how things are going in the Fire Department.
Things going well. We are in, again, it's that time of year, it's cold and flu season, and although a lot of reports are that the flu is pretty much nil at this point, we're seeing patients that have the same symptoms, so they're all being treated as a potential COVID exposure or COVID patient, if you will. So, we're taking all the necessary precautions and doing all the decontamination as well. The firefighters are being very diligent with that, being diligent with their PPE. The deputy and Lieutenant Woods have been great with making sure that our PP, we have a fairly good stockpile. I think we're probably a little bit ahead of the game compared to some of our counterparts in surrounding communities. Rebecca Sanderson has been doing a phenomenal job keeping up the CARES and FEMA grants. The CARES Act was extended until December 31st, 2021, so it'll be quarterly reporting, just as it was before. The eligible cost, eligible items for reimbursement are very stringent now in the CARES Act, where, if you remember in the beginning, it was extremely loose, and they really weren't being particular with what we were putting in for. However, now they are, there's a list, probably because there have been some people that have taken advantage of the generosity. So, she's doing a really good job keeping up with that, making sure that the spreadsheets are put in in a timely fashion, making sure that she sifts through the, all of the things that are being put in by the department heads for each individual department. To date, I think we're just over, or just about 800,000 in reimbursements out of the 1.7 million that we are allotted. So, I'd say we're doing fairly well with that. And, you know, the Board of Health has been phenomenal. Shelley, Kim, Tracy, Wyndham, they've been excellent. Shelley's kept me in the loop. You know, on a very consistent basis, we talk probably two, three times a week at a minimum, especially with this upcoming vaccine that we're getting for the first responders. She's been phenomenal with, you know, taking care of all the logistics for that and making sure that, you know, having the online site available for all the police, fire, and dispatch members who want to get vaccinated. So, I can't say enough good things about how they've done through all of this, and hopefully, like she said, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, there's not another train.
Very poetic, Chief Kavanaugh.
I'm sorry.
Shelley Newhouse, I recognize I may have cut you off. I wanted to give you the opportunity, if you had anything else to add.
Say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I don't know if I had cut you off before.
Oh, no, I just, it's just so nice that we have a great working relationship with the police and the Fire Department. I just, some of these other towns, like, they don't even speak, and it's like, it's just so nice that we can all call each other on our cellphones, no matter what day it is, and just talk and coordinate things, so it's so easy. And everyone, you know, can call me when they have questions about anything, and it's like an open door, which is nice.
Good to hear that, Shelley Newhouse. I wanted to allow members to ask questions or comment if they wanted to.
I got a question. Shelley, have you and your staff received the shot yet?
No. I don't know. I'm getting the shot. If there's, if there is a vaccine left over on Thursday, I will get it. But I don't, right now, we're at, we're maxed out, but unless someone declines, then me and my staff will get vaccinated. So, I'm not worried. If we don't get it Thursday, I'll do it next week or the week after, when the next round comes in.
I just, hopefully, they all get it. We can't afford to lose you or your staff for any time at all, so I just want, I was a little, I've been a little concerned about that. Thank you.
I do plan on getting it.
Great.
Mr. Bendel, I saw you had raised your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you both for being here. I was asked to inquire, Shelley, are we giving out on Thursday the Moderna shot or the Pfizer shot?
We'll be giving out the Moderna shot. The Pfizer vaccine is, really has to be kept at temperatures that we can accommodate, so the Pfizer vaccine is the ones that go to the hospitals and the clinical care settings, because they have the ability to hold that vaccine. So, all the locals will be getting the Moderna.
Okay, great. And so, my second question is, are you, do you plan on relaying the number of people who have been vaccinated within the community, you know, weekly updates?
I wasn't going to, but I suppose I can do that.
Yeah, I guess I'd just be curious of the number, not talking about who or when, just the number of vaccinations that the town has distributed.
Yeah, I can do that. There's a pretty elaborate system, online registration system that's across the state, so it really got rolled out this past week. So, we worked all weekend getting the site up and running. Kim, my clerk, has been awesome. She's actually been helping, she's like a whiz at it now. She's helping all the other towns get their PrEP mod system up and running. They're all calling her. She's like, "I don't know how I became like the expert in it," but she picked it up really quickly. So, I'm thinking that Thursday, there'll be bumps in the road with the first couple vaccinators, because we have, it's on an iPad, and we're going to chuck them off as they come. So, it's nice that Thursday's clinic is going to be a small one, and it's internal, so, you know, if we have a few hiccups, it's, we're not holding anyone up, so we'll, we'll see how that goes. But yeah, and then, so, I can generate a report from that, and I can do that.
Yeah, please don't get me wrong, Shelley. The last thing you need to do is have more work put on your plate. But I, you know, we often, you bump into people in town, and they say, "Oh, my goodness, I saw the update. The number is this, the number is that," and residents, you know, get concerned about that number. You know, it'd be nice for some of those residents to see, "Well, yeah, the number's high, but, you know, don't worry, this one, we're all going to vaccinate in our community alone." By the town, you can't keep track of who gets privately vaccinated.
Right.
Work or whatever, but I mean, it's something positive to give to those folks who are concerned about the climbing numbers. And then, and lastly, Chief Kavanaugh, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but yourself and Chief Desmond and others feel confident that we'll be able to secure this vaccine when it arrives in town?
I have it.
You have it, okay.
Yeah.
Please don't say on live television where you have it, but...
I have it. Secret.
Shelley is far superior than anybody on either side of my building.
All right. As long as you guys are confident, I'm confident, so. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Any other members?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Shelley, just to reiterate about Thursday, first responders, and then it goes to the general public?
Well, sort of the general public, but...
Age brackets?
No, no, they're just sections. The general public is really not until Phase 3, so it's congregate care settings, home healthcare workers is next. So, those, that population that resides in Wilmington's. You know, Wilmington has a couple of group homes, not, not a lot, not maybe 50 residents if I combine them all, so, and staff. So, we'll get those, those done, and then we'll go to home healthcare workers and non-COVID-facing. I mean, they say non-COVID-facing, but they really are COVID-facing, like a dentist or a chiropractor or a physical therapist, things like that. I mean, I think they're COVID-facing. I wouldn't call them non-COVID-facing, but they, they're next. So, probably going to end up grouping all three of those together, because I'm just not seeing that, you know, I like to get, I don't want to vaccinate like 10 people one day, and I like to do a couple hundred, get them, get it done.
And when you, when you get into Stage 3, would it be one of, they would have to sign up on...
Yeah, everyone's going to have to sign up, the whole way through. And if people have trouble and they can't sign up, you know, walk-ins will be allowed, but I'm gonna, I want to make sure, because some people aren't that great on a computer or they don't have a computer. So, it's all right, there'll be walk-ins, but most people, you have to sign up, because that's the only way I can keep my number. So, what I foresee happening is we'll get vaccine delivered on a weekly basis, so that's how we'll, and I'm going to probably run clinics like Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and vaccine will come on Mondays. So, and then on Fridays, I can report for what I foresee that I'll need on Monday. So, it'll just be, keep coming and rolling in. If all goes smoothly, that's the way that I see it happening.
Right. Thank you, and thank you once again. Really appreciate the work that you and your staff does, the Fire Department and the Police Department, and really, all the staff in DPW and workers at the Town Hall. It just, it's amazing, and I see Judge Hooper, the building, you know, group as well, it's just amazing what everybody's doing to protect the residents of the town. Thank you.
Selectman Omahaoni, do we have any comments or questions?
Well, I mean, I feel like I'm always kind of the one that is just reminding people of our responsibilities here. I mean, I know, I've been seeing a lot of encouraging posts around, you know, residents getting the vaccine because of their different professions, but I also see the numbers going up, and I think, you know, we need, again, to remain vigilant. It's scary times. I think when we had the holidays, we kind of expected the numbers to increase, but we're now almost in the middle of January, and at the highest rate we've ever been. That's terrifying. I think, you know, we like to naively think, "Well, maybe the death rate is decreasing," and then, you know, at the minute I think that, I hear of two friends' parents who passed away from it. So, I think we need to remain vigilant, as exhausting as it is, I get it. You know, I've said this a million times before, we all have COVID fatigue at this point. Our kids are all struggling with dealing with the school situation, but we have to just try as hard as we can to keep focused on getting through this and getting to the other side of it. Like Chief said, you know, we want there to be this light at the end of the tunnel and not another wave. So, you know, I just ask everyone again to try to be as vigilant as you can and be conscientious, not just be yourself, but for all of us.
Thank you, Ms. Omahaoni. And Chief Kavanaugh, Mr. Newhouse, thank you both very much, and please relay that to your respective departments as well as Joe Cooper and the Public Affairs Department. Mr. Newhouse, Chief Kavanaugh, it's on your shoulders that we're going to see the end of this, and we'll get across that finish line or to that light at the end of the tunnel, or whatever metaphor you prefer, but certainly, your diligence, your leadership, your perseverance, and your intelligence is really very much appreciated in these very difficult times. So, that, as well as the army of volunteer nurses that, of course, are willing to step up and help see us through this. So, yeah, we've got a long way to go, but certainly, we're getting closer. We're closer now than we were yesterday, and we'll be closer a little bit more tomorrow. So, thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, and that is our last appointment for the night, so we'll be on to communications. Mr. Hall?
Yes, first item under Communications is a letter from Edward Elsouza, from the, who has been serving on the Board of Registarians, and I'll just read it into the record. This is directed to Tina Conway, the Town Clerk. "After much consideration and considering my continuing health, I am sadly requesting that you accept my letter of resignation effective December 31, 2020. I have served on the Board of Registarians for over 37 years and have considered it an honor and a privilege. Tina, you as the Town Clerk and your office staff, along with the past Town Clerks Patty Ward, Kay Scanlon, and Sharon George, get my utmost respect for your devotion to your jobs and, and community. I have learned a lot from each of, and every one of you, and will look back on these years with admiration and fondness." Next is a memorandum from Christina Tuma Conway, Town Clerk, outlining the process for filling the vacancy, and as she describes here in this memo, essentially, there, as you know, there are three members on the Board of Registarians, and per statute, which is General Law, Chapter 51, Section 15, it establishes that at least one member of each of the primary predominant parties be represented, and then the third spot is open to either. In this case, the options for the Board are essentially for the Board to send a certified letter to one or both of the Town Committees seeking nominees for this vacancy. And as Ms. Conway suggests, it's her recommendation that the Board direct me to send letters to both Town Committees. Per the General Law, the Town Committees have up to 45 days to respond with a slate of nominations, and then it would be the Board's responsibility to make a choice for the next individual to serve on the Board of Registarians. uh, send a certified letter to one or both of the town committees, uh, seeking nominees for this vacancy. Uh, and as Ms. Conway suggests, it's her recommendation that, uh, the board, uh, direct me to, uh, send letters to both town committees. Uh, per the general law, the, uh, town committees have up to 45 days to respond with a slate of nominations and then it would be the board's, uh, responsibility to make a choice for the next, individual to serve on the Board of Registarians.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I certainly think it would be appropriate if we could send a letter to Mr. Souza thanking him for his service on the Board of Registarians for 37 plus years. Uh, if there is no objection from the board, uh, we could take item number eight, I'm sorry, but item number seven on the agenda up at this point, the board to consider the process of filling the Board of Registarians vacancy. Uh, I will highlight, uh, the town clerk's recommendation that we solicit nominations from the committee chairs of both the Republican and Democratic town committees.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we solicit nominations from both the Democratic and Republican town committees and, and accept the recommendation of the clerk.
Second? Another motion from Ms. Omahoney, second by Mr. Bendel, discussion. See none? We'll call for a vote. Mr. Bendel?
Aye.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Ms. DePama?
Yes.
Ms. Omahoney?
Yes.
Now I can unanimously sign the yes as well. Mr. Hall?
Yes. Uh, next is a, an email, uh, from Parak Shah, who has served on the Finance Committee, uh, for the last several years. Uh, this is to John Doherty, uh, Chair of the Finance Committee. Again, I'll read this into the record. I hope all is well and that you've had a, a nice holiday. I am writing because I must resign from the Finance Committee. My wife and I have just purchased a condo in Andover and will be moving there at the beginning of the year. I want to thank you for everything. Uh, I learned much and truly enjoyed my time on the Finance Committee. Thank you again, as, and as always, please let me know, uh, if I ever can be of assistance. Uh, and so, uh, as a result, uh, this creates a vacancy on the Finance Committee and, uh, for the, uh, inhabitant bylaws and also, uh, a policy that was established a few years ago by the Appointing, Committee, which is comprised of the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, the Chair of the Finance Committee and the Town Moderator. Uh, the, uh, town clerk provided notice, uh, to the Appointing Committee. Uh, and, uh, notice will appear in the Town Crier on the 13th advising the public of this vacancy. Uh, we also sent it out on Facebook. It's on the town's webpage. Uh, and we will be receiving, uh, interested individuals through the 29th of January. Uh, and then the expectation is, uh, those, uh, interested parties, their names, uh, and applications will be sent to the Appointing Committee. And they, uh, the Appointing Committee will need to come up with a, a time to, uh, consider the applicants and make an appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. And similarly, uh, I'd ask that you just send a letter to, uh, Mr. Shah, just thanking him for his, his service on the Finance Committee.
Yes.
The next four items under communications are all relative to the same, uh, topic. And I think it's most expedient if rather than have any discussion and possibly take that for the Consider item on them, uh, we just wait until, uh, manager has summarized all four of those, uh, communications. Mr. Hall?
Yes. Uh, so e- each of these, uh, i- items, uh, are responding to the, correspondence that Chairman Eaton sent, uh, along with the, uh, draft, uh, policy for remote participation. So we have, uh, communications from the Board of Library Commissioners, uh, the, um, Planning and Conservation Commission, uh, the Board of Registarians and Bylaw Committee, uh, and then also our IT Director, uh, Mr. O'Neill. Uh, and there, um, just to try to capsulize, uh, the comments here, w- one of the, um, points that has been made here is that the, uh, there's some question as to what constitutes, the, uh, term unreasonably difficult and suggesting that that should be clarified. There's also, there was some concern amongst, uh, several of the commenters here about the 48 hour notice, whether there would be the ability to, um, get the proper setup in place, uh, within 48 hours. There's also some, just some technical challenges, um, uh, involved in trying to accommodate that person who is, uh, participating remotely, as it was noted in a couple of the comments here. Uh, some boards and committees, uh, planning and, planning board and conservation, for example, it could also apply to Board of Appeals. Uh, the applicants will come in with poster boards and, uh, various documents that will be shown in person. Uh, and clearly the challenge for the remote participant, uh, is to be able to be fully engaged in that meeting and see those, uh, documents in real time. Uh, and, uh, as there's, uh, uh, some concern at this point as to whether we have the, uh, technical capabilities to, uh, ensure that that happens. Uh, so, you know, I think there's, um, uh, some concerns about our ability to, uh, fully, uh, implement this, um, as intended. And, and so I, I frankly would recommend that the, uh, Board, uh, defer on this, uh, until we can do some further review.
Oh, yeah. If the, uh, there are no objections from the Board, we can take up, uh, the Board to consider, uh, the agenda, item number eight, the Board to consider adopting a remote participation policy. Uh, given some of the comments from, uh, the respective boards, commissions and committees and, uh, our IT directors' comments as to the, technological logistics of, of making this work and making, uh, remote participation and, uh, post-COVID, other members of their respective boards, committees and commissions are participating in person. I, I tend to think that it would be, uh, most wise at this point to take no action because I, I don't, see at this point this, uh, becoming something that, uh, we would be putting down departments in a position where they would be, uh, able to, uh, effectively, uh, replicate the, uh, experience of being in person during, uh, a meeting for those who, uh, might not be able to. Uh, certainly it's always been available to chairs if, if one or several members of a board committee or commission cannot participate, if they can, uh, we schedule a meeting. Uh, and certainly for boards that are, uh, permanent authorities, the Board of Appeals, uh, certainly being one of them, the planning board. I also have to, uh, consider, uh, continuing hearings where a super majority is necessary. Uh, and one or, uh, more members may not be able to participate, um, simply because, uh, one member missing might, uh, not be allowed to ultimately make a decision. So it's my, uh, position that I think that we should be taking no action at least, but open to other discussions from other members.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to take no action.
Second?
Make a motion by Mr. Bendel, second by Mr. Kyra, discussion. See none? Mr. Bendel?
Aye.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Ms. DePama?
Yes.
Ms. Omahoney?
Yes.
And I mean, yes, as well, if you may. Uh, Mr. Hall, I would normally give it back to you, but the next is an email from, uh, Mr. Kyra updating everyone on the selection of an owner's project manager for the Town Hall slash School Administration Building. Mr. Kyra?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I also see that Mr. Hooper is here as well. Uh, so I don't know, Judge, you here to speak on this, um, as well?
No, I was asked to come here for another reason, but, uh, go ahead and give your personal.
Right. Um, everybody has received, um, the email, um, so I'm just gonna go through it quickly. I won't read the whole thing. Uh, the Town Hall School Administration Committee held its first meeting on Tuesday, December 15th, 2020, to discuss the selection of an owner's project manager, OPM. That town's representative, uh, would be throughout the, uh, study and the schematic di- design process. Uh, the OPM will be instrumental in hiring an architect, determining the location, estimate a construction cost for the project and communication with the town residents. The town did send out an RFQ prior to that first meeting and we received 15 firms, uh, and all of them were very good, let me add. The committee was tasked with, um, trying to narrow that 15 down to a shot list of four. Uh, so then at its December 15th meeting, each, uh, member announced after they did their, their review process, they announced their finalist in the shot list. And it was a clear, clear choice with the, with the committee. Uh, the four selected, uh, firms were CHA Consulting, Colliers International, P3 and Vertex Companies. The committee, uh, then had, uh, its next meeting on January 4th, where it interviewed two of the finalists, uh, Vertex and Colliers. Uh, and then its second meeting was on January 7th and it interviewed the next two finalists, P3 and CHA. Uh, after the interviews, uh, it, well, let me say, the, the interviews took about an hour. Uh, we had 10 standard questions that we asked in addition to two, uh, other questions that, that came up. And these meetings were also, uh, on WCTV by, by way of Zoom. All three meetings were held that way. Uh, at the January 7th meeting, at the final meeting, uh, the committee then, uh, listened to references. Four individuals were tasked with, uh, getting the references. Judge Hooper, uh, had, went out to, to reference Vertex. I went out for Colliers, Paul Malorani, uh, got the references for CHA and Diane Allen got the references for P3. So the committee had a, a lively discussion on the four finalists and, came up with another rank, uh, list for, let me just add that, uh, John O'Neill was instrumental in doing all that for us. So thank you, John, for putting those, uh, rankings, um, together. And the final, the, the selection, uh, in order, uh, was P3 was first, CHA was second, Colliers was third and Vertex was, um, was the fourth. Uh, so the committee made a motion to accept the results and to forward those, uh, to Town Manager Howell, uh, to begin the process of meeting with P3 for the purposes of negotiating terms and contracts. Um, I would like to mention that, um, Manager Howell was at all of the meetings and, uh, it was, it was good that he was there to, to lend assistance, uh, when needed. The five, the committee was consistent of, consisting of five, uh, member permanent building committee. Uh, was Judge Hooper, Diane Allen, Paul Malorani, Jack Holloway and Michael Turtuck. I'm not too sure of the.
Kachuk. Mike Kachuk.
Mike Kachuk. I was the designee from the Board of Selectmen. Uh, the school committee designee was Steve Bjork. Uh, Finance Committee designee, John Doherty. And the Assistant Superintendent of Administration of Finance, Paul Rigerio. Uh, Judge Hooper was our chairman, Paul Malorani was our vice chair. And as I said, the Town Manager Howell was at all the meetings for us. And that, that's pretty much it. So it's now in the hands of the Town Manager.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you, Mr. Kyra. So.
Uh, yes. Uh, next under correspondence, uh, is a memorandum, uh, that was sent to, uh, the Finance Committee and Department Heads, as well as the Board of Selectmen, uh, that outlines the, uh, schedule, uh, for the, um, budget process here. As everyone knows, the presentation will be made on the 25th and then right after that, uh, January 26th is the start of the, uh, meetings with the Finance Committee. Uh, they run through the, um, the month of January into early February. I won't cite them specifically because that's taken care of later on in the agenda here. But then also there's a separate document that, uh, identifies, uh, some of the key dates, uh, during the process here. Uh, certainly the, uh, town elections, uh, 24th of April, uh, town meeting is May 1st. Uh, just, um, the deadline for submission of petition warrant articles is February 5th. Selectmen will be asked to sign the warrant on March 8th. Uh, the Finance Committee, a public hearing is scheduled for March 16th. And this, uh, also includes the Planning Board. Uh, just to, by way of note, all of these sessions at this point will be via Zoom, given the circumstances. Uh, and that is kind of a snapshot of, um, of the schedule running up to, uh, town meeting. Uh, next, uh, under, uh, correspondence is the, uh, town meeting, fiscal year 22 budget calendar, which I just went over. Uh, and then the, uh, memorandum from, uh, me to the board with regard to the location of the annual town meeting. Uh, there's been some internal discussions, uh, in the last week or so about, um, preparation for annual town meeting. Uh, unfortunately, I think, um, you know, the expectation is that while the vaccines will be a, uh, certainly a welcome, uh, effort here to quell the pandemic. You know, I, I don't expect, and I think Shelly, uh, bore this out in her presentation, that, uh, COVID will be gone by May 1st. So I think the expectation is that we will not be in a position to have annual town meeting, uh, at the high school, as has been traditionally the case. And so this memo, uh, outlines, uh, the options that we were looking at. Uh, one being, uh, holding the, uh, event at the, uh, Shriners Auditorium. Uh, the other possibility is, uh, to have the town meeting, uh, at the, um, softball field on the high school campus, uh, under a tent, as we did last year. Uh, as I indicated in my memo, uh, my recommendation is that the, uh, board authorize the use of the Shriners Auditorium. Uh, I think last year, uh, ultimately the, uh, event being at the softball field was a big success. Uh, but in, you know, that event took place on June 27th. Uh, May 1st, as we all know, being New Englanders, it can be, uh, 75 degrees and sunny. It could be 50 and blustery. So, uh, I think weather plays a major factor on, on that date. And the Shriners would certainly take that element, uh, out of the equation. Uh, it certainly can accommodate, uh, the number of, uh, people, uh, essentially the same footprint that we last year. And so what I'm suggesting is that the board, uh, give that consideration. Uh, and, uh, it would be my request that the board, um, provide some direction, um, by no later than January 25th. Uh, as I noted in my, um, correspondence here, um, everybody, I think every community is in the same boat here and is going to be looking at either renting tents or, um, or identifying other venues. Uh, we do know that there is another, uh, outfit, uh, on a waiting list at the Shriners. Uh, and so I think it would be important for us to, for the board to make a decision early on so that they know whether they can, uh, have access to the Shriners on that data, whether they need to make other plans.
So I just want to highlight the, um, the point that, uh, the Shriners is offering this, um, to the town at no charge, which certainly appreciate their generosity, um, as well. So, uh, board members certainly are more than happy, are more than welcome to chime in at this point, but we're going to be, including this as a Board to Consider item on January 25th at our next meeting.
The Chair?
Mr. DePama?
Uh, I am, I know Mr. Hooper is here. My question is, what did the tent cost us last year, the whole setup?
The whole setup was just over $11,500.
Mr. Hooper, that was covered by the CARES Act, I believe.
Yes.
Correct.
But I understand CARES money is, uh, out of the combined this time around?
From what I'm hearing.
What do you feel about the, uh, Shriners?
Well, I mean, for the choices that we have, um, just because the Shriners Auditorium is 37,000 square feet and it's capable of seating over 4,000 people without social distancing, uh, and where it's free of charge to us as a town of Wilmington, uh, it makes perfect sense, uh, as the manager pointed out. Anything else? I mean, we, the tent that we rented, uh, we got for last year was 12,800 square feet, which is just a little bit larger than our gymnasium. We, we were able to put 300 people in there. We were able to put 300 people in there, but because of the weather, we're not sure what's going to happen. So accessibility, I think the Shriners is a kind of a no-brainer.
John O'Neill, would you be able to put up the diagram of what is at least being contemplated? So this this design here, I'd ask Paul Looney to put this together. You recall, he provided a similar design or similar document for the elections. He had actually worked on this a little bit last year. I think he and George had had a conversation about the prospect even last year of placing this in the Shriners Auditorium. So essentially, what you see here is, on the far left, if you're familiar with the auditorium, those are the large doors that come in to the auditorium. The far right, if you will, is the end of Fordham Road. And so the initial tables there are where registration could be. This is all just a draft at this point. The seating, essentially 250 seats for registered voters, and then another 27 or so seats for non-registered voters. And then, so all together, and there's additional seating as well for the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen and staff. So all told, there's 297 seats in this particular design, which is the same number we had at the Town Meeting in 2020.
And there's ample room for expansion there, so depending on what we have for turnout.
And unless there's any other comments or questions, I'll move on.
Yeah, I would just consider, if we do consider the Shriners, I would almost consider a reasonable donation to the Shriners. I know that they offered the facility for the election free of charge. It mentions that they have another potential booking that they're going to have to move out or not book, which means they'll lose financial monies on that. And I understand that donations may, they, you know, they always say, no, no, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll take it as a, we'll give it as a donation. But I think any contribution that we make to them would go directly to the, from my understanding, to the Shriners charities. So just throwing that out to consider is, you know, if we're getting reimbursed from the CARES Act, or, you know, that might help. But, you know, I'm not suggesting the full amount that they normally rent that facility, but something that's generous and reasonable.
And I would just chime in. I agree with Selectmen Kyra. I think their generosity with the Election Day, as well as this, should be acknowledged in some manner. And I think, you know, thankfully, unfortunately, but thankfully, we've kind of already worked out the kinks of things like parking and accessibility for a situation like this. So I, I don't see why would we be thinking of alternatives if they're willing to offer it to us. And it makes sense, and we already kind of have the the schematics worked out. I don't see why we would need to even really think of any other options at this point.
So at this point, the plan subject to the chairs, our discussion about the next agenda would be to put this on the agenda as a board to consider on the meeting of the 25th. Next is correspondence memo from me to the board, updating the board on the status of the Reading Municipal Light Department Substation. You'll recall, Colleen O'Brien came before the board back in October of 2019, and was addressing the board about the need that they have to find a new substation, to construct a new substation. The existing substation on Wildwood Street is 50-plus years old. It's a tired facility. Apparently, the, it's difficult obtaining replacement parts and making repairs, so it is in need of replacement. At that time, there was no action taken. But in the last several months, there have been discussions that George Hooper, who is a member of the Board, the Citizens Advisory Board at RMLD, and I have had with Colleen and others, RMLD had been in conversation with a property owner on Route 125 about the prospect of sale of property that RMLD could use to, in turn, provide to the town as compensating land, if you will, for three acres, which is what they are seeking, that would be right off of 125, right along the New England Power Corridor, which is the prime location for them. Ultimately, those discussions unfortunately hit a stalemate, and we were originally planning to have a conversation this evening where she was going to be making a presentation, but at this point, that has been indefinitely postponed. Next is a letter that I sent to Maria Gary Dodd, who is the Executive Vice President and Branch Manager at the Lowell Five. Back in, at the end of December, she contacted Pam McKenzie, expressing interest in helping the town in any, in any manner that we so desired by making a donation to the town of $5,000. As you know, Lowell Five is a branch in Wilmington here. And given the situation that we have with COVID, and in particular, some of the resources at the Health Department is in need of, the funds are being applied in that fashion. And so this letter just extends our thanks for the Lowell Five being just a great corporate citizen, and we greatly appreciate their donation. And then finally, we have correspondence from Verizon that is highlighting the fact that apparently some of their negotiations with their provider of MGM HD, which is one of their programs, the negotiations apparently didn't go well, and so that programming expired as of December 31 this past year.
All right, so we are on to item number six on the agenda, our last remaining board to consider item. It's a request of Jimmy Allen for the installation of a tree or bench at the Wilmington Town Common in memory of Paul Allen Jr., retired tree foreman of the Wilmington Department of Public Works. I know Mr. Hall had had our operations director of the VPW reach out to Ms. Allen for a little bit of clarification as to what the request was as of a conversation with Mr. Hall earlier today. We were still waiting to hear back. Were there any changes in that?
No, I have not heard back from Jamie McGoldy. As you pointed out, he was going to have a conversation with Ms. Allen about what she was seeking in particular, and offer some options, whether it be a bench or a tree. So as soon as I get confirmation on what's being proposed, I'll bring it back to the board.
All right, so at this point, I would, it would be appropriate to take no action on this at this time, and revisit it after that conversation is taken place. We have a motion for taking no action on Agenda Item Number Six.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Omahony, second by Mr. Bendel, discussion. See none, Mr. Bendel.
Aye.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. Depama. Mr. Depama, you are on mute.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Omahony.
Yes.
And I'm E.S. as well, it's unanimous. And we have already decided on the process of filling the Board of Registered vacancy with that upon the communications, and we did decide to take no action on adopting the rural participation policy, as we took that up on the communications. So we are on to public comments. Mr. O'Neill, do you have any members of the public who are wishing to speak?
Mr. Chair, we currently do not.
I'll give it a minute. I will remind folks, to make a public comment, you can dial 1-646-558-8656, then enter meeting You press pound, and then press pound again at the next voice prompt. You will raise a virtual hand by pressing star nine.
No callers, Mr. Chair.
All right, at this point, I will close public comments, and we will move on to announcements. I will start just by reminding folks that the interviews that Selectmen Kyra had referenced for the Town Hall/School Administration Building OTM Committee are available on the WCTV website, and also the Permanent Building Committee page on the town's website, WilmingtonMA.gov, under Virtual Meeting Recording. Any other members have an announcement?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say Happy New Year to everybody, and I want to encourage residents to join me and try to tune into as many of the Finance Committee, the budget hearings that are coming up. It's a crucial part in a town's budget, and I want to thank members of the Finance Committee for what will be a really busy couple of months. And also thank you to WCTV and IT, and to make sure that people can watch them virtually.
Also thank our town's IT Department that have taken an increased role in making sure that those meetings are hosted and accessible to residents as well. That's certainly my second thought, that motion, Mr. Bendel. Any other announcements? See none, new business.
Mr. Chair, if I could just offer a couple of points along your lines, I just do want to really point out the extra effort that has been made by John O'Neill and his staff during these last nine months with Zoom. It's almost become ubiquitous at this point, similar to a conference call, but the number of sessions that he and Andrew and Sue in his office have covered, night meetings, meetings during the day, you know, it's, just imagine all the various board and committee and commission meetings that take place in the course of a year, and he's probably, his, he and his staff have probably covered 80% of them more. So just wanted to extend my thanks to him and his staff for that. Also, I just wanted to point out, today we received correspondence via an email from Senator Tar's office announcing a webinar. I'll just read this. On Wednesday, January 13th, The Health Connector is hosting a live webinar to help Massachusetts residents who have lost employer-sponsored health insurance to learn about their health coverage options through the Health Connector. And it makes reference to the agenda, which will be general information about the state's Health Connector and the types of coverage available through MAHealthConnector.org, rules around choosing Health Connector plans as an alternative to COBRA, open enrollment for 2021 health plan coverage, tips when applying for coverage, including choosing a plan and enrolling, overview of available payment options, and how to get the best help with this process. Again, this is going to take place this coming Wednesday, 5 to, 4 to 5 p.m. And the, it's going to be a Zoom webinar to register. This will be put on the town's website, and we'll also send it out via Twitter. So for folks who perhaps are looking at other options to COBRA, this, this could be helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Anyone else with new business? See none, Mr. Howell, do you mind taking us through important dates?
Important dates, January 4th through the 15th is a curbside collection of Christmas trees. January 18th, Martin Luther King Day, the town offices are closed. January 25th is an Board of Selectmen's meeting virtually. The budget, fiscal '22 budget will be presented at that time. January 26th, Finance Committee, again, all these meetings are virtual, 7 p.m. Fiscal '22 Budget Overview, Revenues and General Government. January 28th, Finance Committee, 7 p.m. Planning and Conservation, Building Inspector, Board of Appeals and Board of Health. February 2nd is the Finance Committee, again, 7 p.m. Department of Public Works. February 4th, Finance Committee, 7 o'clock, Veterans Services, Elderly Services. February 5th is the last day to submit petition warrant articles for inclusion on the warrant for the annual Town Meeting on May 1st, 2021. February 8th is another Board of Selectmen's meeting, 7 p.m. February 9th, Finance Committee Meeting, 7 p.m. Public Buildings Department. February 11th, Finance Committee, Public Library, Recreation and Historical Commission. February 22nd is another Board of Selectmen's meeting, 7 p.m. February 23rd, Finance Committee, Police Department, Public Safety, Dispatch and Fire Department. February 25th is the Town Clerk and IT, again, 7 p.m. And then March 2nd, Finance Committee, Shawshing Tech School District. And March 4th is the Finance Committee, 7 p.m. Wilmington Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Howell. Lastly, is our salute to service. Brooke Green is a veteran of the U.S. Army and the Massachusetts National Guard. She's earned the Army Good Conduct Medal, Global War on Terrorism Expedentiary Medal, many other awards. Brooke was a second lieutenant when she deployed for Iraq in 2013 to 2014. Brooke's also extremely involved in Wilmington Youth Hockey Organization, and has assisted young players raising funds and items to donate to the Soldiers' Home in Chelsea, the VA Hospital in Bedford, and has also sent overseas to the men and women currently deployed. Brooke currently serves as the Lieutenant on the Wilmington Fire Department. I would like to thank Brooke for her service to our country and our community, which also includes a membership on the Wilmington Commission on Disabilities. And with that, we've discussed all items on the agenda, and it is only 25 minutes past the 8 o'clock hour, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.
I'm going to give the motion to Mr. Depama, and I'm going to count Mr. Omahony's as a second. Mr. Bendel.
Yes.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. Depama.
Yes.
Mr. Omahony.
Yes.
And I'm E.S. Good night.